Good evening. I call this regular school board meeting to order. It is March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and it is six P. M. Dr. Salazar, do you have anyone here to help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, this evening we have students from Los Fresnos United to help lead us in the pledge and here to introduce them is the proud principal of Los Fresnos United, Mrs. Pinada.
Good evening, President Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Elisa Pinada, and I am the principal of Los Fresnos United. I am honored to present two outstanding students this evening, Edith Delgado and Robert Pinada. Edith Delgado sets an excellent example for her peers and is dedicated, and is a dedicated role model. Her parents are Gabriel Delgado and Marlene Anaya. In fact, it is from her mother that Edith draws most of her inspiration. Her mother motivates her to achieve academically and contribute as a citizen. Edith achieves high levels of success across the contents, but her favorite subject is math as well as health science. However, Edith does not only excel in the classroom, she is also talented and dedicated student athlete. Her hustle and grit during practice extends into volleyball games, volleyball club events, and basketball games. She is a volunteer with her church and strives to help people in need. To further her efforts in helping those less fortunate, Edith is planning to attend Saint Mary's College in San Antonio. Robert Pinada is also an excellent example for his peers as well as an outstanding role model. His parents are Roman and Rebecca Pinada, who motivate him to do his best in academics and in sports. Robert's favorite subject is algebra. Although he does well in all his classes, most of them at the honors level, he works hard outside of the classroom as well. He is a student athlete with football and track and was even named Offensive Newcomer of the Year in Football. Robert has learned to manage his time well and always gives one hundred percent to both his studies and his team. He wishes to further his career as a leader on the field and attend Texas A. M. to become a football coach. Edith and Robert are positive examples for their peers. L. F. U. is extremely proud of both of them.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
Will everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence? We'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to Dustin Cole Wilson. He is a, was a student at L. F. U., a member of the wrestling team, and he just recently lost his battle with cancer, so if we can just keep him in our prayers. Will the proud parents of these students, if they are here, please stand up and be recognized? Okay, let me put the readers on so we can get this show on the road. All right, Mr. Castillo, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Robert Trevino?
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Martin Castillo is here. Mr. Jesus Amaya?
Present.
Ms. Sandra Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Letizia Quintero?
Present.
Mr. Juan Sierra?
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar. And our council, Ms. Casey Yafuerte.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. We're going to Roman numeral number five, district recognitions. We're going to start out with girls varsity basketball. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Trevino and members of the board, this evening I'll introduce you to our high school principal, Mr. Justin Stoneball, who will then in turn make some introductions of his own.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. At that time of year, we get to recognize some of our student athletes at Los Fresnos High School. This time, we're focusing on some of our winter sports, I believe, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, wrestling, and swimming, and so I know you'll be very impressed with them, as we are, as many of them are student athletes and excel in both the classroom and on the field. So without further ado, I'm going to invite our athletic director, Mr. David Cantu, up to the lectern to begin the introductions.
Hey, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, thank you so much for supporting athletics. What you do for our student athletes at Los Fresnos goes a long way. These kids have done some amazing things representing all of us and this community, and I say we'll get right to them. Girls' basketball. Now, I will say before I get going that all these teams captured postseason births, the playoffs, which is all that we strive to do. Some of them, individuals, took it steps further, and even all the way up to the state level. I'm sure the coaches will identify those, but we'll start with Coach Alex Lucio, girls' basketball.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar, I am Coach Lucio, proud coach of Los Fresnos Lady Falcons. I just wanted to go over some accomplishments that we had this year. We went to La Jolla, and we were tournament champions in La Jolla. We also went to the B. I. S. D. Invitational, as we were tournament champions in that tournament as well. We broke the Los Fresnos school record for most points in the season with two thousand fifty points. We finished the season with twenty-six wins and eleven losses and earning a playoff berth. I would like now to introduce one of my assistant coaches, Charlie Rivas. Coach Benya was not able to make it, but they helped so much behind the scenes, helping me out with the Xs and Os and taking care of the girls, from laundry to everything. Just want to give a big shout out to my coaches. They did an awesome job this year. Now I'd like to go ahead and introduce the girls. I have sophomore Jessie Teresa Brisky. We have another sophomore, Alexis Olade. She's getting ready for a playoff game. She's in soccer. She was not able to make it today. We also have junior Mia Hernandez. She had a lot of girls, they do a lot of extracurricular activities. She's getting ready for a border patrol test and some kind of thing that she's doing, so she was unable to make it. We have junior Mia Ordaz. Senior Dakota Martinez. Dakota is also the home run king. She's leading pretty much all the district and probably the valley in home runs this We have senior Alessandra Tobar, who's also playing softball this year. Senior Eileen Ortega was not able to make it today. She was first team all district, and she also surpassed one thousand career points. We have junior Shiloh Jones, second team all district, was selected to play in the Real Sports Live All-Star Showcase Tournament as a junior. We have senior Olivia Farah. She's also at practice right now for a senior all-star showcase game, so she wasn't able to make it. She was unanimous first team all district, surpassed one thousand career points, selected to play in the Real Sports Live All-Star Showcase Tournament, as well as R. G. V. Vipers All Valley Showcase Game. And that was the last of our team. Thank you.
were bi-district champions and area finalists. We have Coach Marco Inahosa.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. I'd just like to say I'm happy to be back. It was a one-year absence, and I'm sorry for that, but we're back. Not to the kids, couple accomplishments this year. We always have goals. One of our goals is always to, you know, win every tournament we go to. We've got three tournaments. We didn't win every tournament, and as Mr. McDonough used to be a former coach, it's not easy winning. Winning's not easy, winning a tournament's not easy, but we did place in every single tournament we attended. We got third place at the San Pralita Tournament, second place at the McAllen Road Tournament, and we were consolation champs at the Hidalgo Tournament, so that was huge for us. Another accomplishment, not a team, but individual, but it also involves a team. One of our players managed to hit the one thousand mark this year, JJ Salazar, for his career. He's at about sixteen hundred points, and we're hoping he can finish with two thousand career points, which is a phenomenal feat in itself. We were one of ten teams to win twenty-five games this year, and again, as a former coach, you know, winning's not easy, and to win twenty-five games is testament to these kids' work, the time they put in, and all their hard work and dedication. So again, one of ten teams in the valley to finish with twenty-five wins. Good job, fellas. And for the eighth time in the last nine years, as long as it's not a district championship, but it's a bi-district, and we'll definitely take a bi-district championship all day, every day, and it's our eighth one in the last nine years, and something these guys are very proud of, because they're the eighth team to do it in Los Fresnos school history. So congratulations, fellas. And I don't know if you guys heard, we did go play San Antonio Taft in the second round. It was a hell of a game. Boy right here, holding the trophy, took a three-point shot with seconds to go, and that thing toilet-balled out. That's sports, though, you've got to love it. But final score fifty-two fifty, and we're again seconds away from a third-round spot. But again, proud of these guys. As soon as we didn't get into the playoffs last year, we started working, and they busted their tail every day, and they gave me all they had, and that's all you can ask for, and they rewarded themselves this year. Now to the players. Senior, we're going to miss him, leader of the team, Luis Ramírez, second team all district. And I almost forgot, because he's back here, my assistant for ten years now, Coach Kike I always got a story about Luis Uicho. He's one of those that is just, we love to have him on the team. We were at the McAllen-Nicky Road Tournament, and like I said, we finished in second place, and we have a chance to win the basketball game, and he missed two free throws to win the game with no time basically on the buzz, on the clock. And he was real hard on himself, disappointed, but he redeemed himself. He hit two humongous free throws in that bi-district game, which in turn was the difference in the ballgame. It got us that bi-district championship, so he redeemed himself, Luis Guerra Senior. And something that he's very proud of. And as soon as we got into the locker room, he goes, "Coach, I made it up." And I said, "Yes, you did." And I'll take this over the other one. Junior Santana Torres. Third team all district, sophomore Jude Barrera. Sophomore Seth Jones. Freshman Dylan Cervantes. Freshman Eric Salazar. And freshman, third team all district, Andrew Munoz. Not able to be here today is JJ Salazar. He will be participating in the Viper All-Star Game this Saturday, and he also has practice this Wednesday, Monday and Wednesday, at Harlingen South. JJ was the offensive MVP, co-offensive MVP for the district, and not able to be here. Also, Gio Galván, second team all district, not able to be here. Levon Lida, who's in baseball right now, senior. Thank you, guys, for having us again. I'm glad Coach Inahosa brought up the Taft basketball game, because that game was one of the most amazing competitions I've ever seen any of our teams from our high schools play. One of the other most amazing was when our girls went to Harlingen last year and made a massive comeback and beat the Cardinals in Harlingen, but both of those teams did a great job. Next, we have our swimming and diving, who has just racked up so many trophies and championships along the way, and they're led by a very spiritual and great leader, Mr. Jaime Perez.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino and members of the board, and Dr. Salazar, it is an honor to be here to acknowledge our student athletes' accomplishments in the swimming pool. We had another successful season and continue to be the number-one six-day swimming program in the valley. And as they say, it takes a village. And as they say, it takes a village, so I have a lot of people to thank. I want to start by thanking God for everything. He is my coach, and he helps me every day. I cannot accomplish anything without him. I want to thank my wife and my daughters for their support and understanding of all the hours that goes into building a championship program. I want to thank my assistant coaches, Patricia Salazar and Stephanie Irving, who just earned her master's degree. And so I have a master's degree. Coach Stephanie Irving just got her master's degree, and Coach Dames is in the master's program. So we lead by example. Coaching is a partnership between the athletes and coaches, coaches and parents. So at this time, if our parents will please stand up to be recognized, parents of the swim teams, please stand up. Thank you very much for your support all season. And now for our B. As. B. A. stands for Big Accomplishments. Our first B. A. is bringing home. We went to Laredo, and that's more like our bi-district championship. We beat San Antonio Brenham to bring that trophy home. Our kids had a great meet. And while the trophy is a B. A., what's even a bigger accomplishment for our program is when one of your athletes says, "Thank you. And to be honest, I would not have been able to accomplish my goals without you pushing me. Thanks again for the opportunity." And this comes from a freshman, who when she was told that she was going to swim the five hundred for the first time, she started getting teary-eyed and said, "I can't do it, Coach." A couple of months later, she wins the district bronze medal in the five hundred. Our second B. A. was our Lady Falcons defending and winning the district championship. Again, while the trophy is a B. A., what's even a bigger accomplishment for our program is when one of your athletes tells us, "Coach, I want to say how thankful I am for giving me a chance to join the swim team with no experience and for not giving up on me. If it wasn't for you believing in me, I wouldn't have the amazing friendships I've made here with my swim team." Amazing friendships. That, to me, is a true big accomplishment. Our third B. A. was our Falcons defending their district championship and winning the Yet again, while the trophy is a B. A., what's even a bigger accomplishment for our program is when one of your athletes emails you and says, "Thank you for letting me, uh, thank you for the middle school swim program and accepting me when I was a seventh grader. Even though I was not the fastest, you still worked with me and pushed me to my limit," and giving us those pep talks, because if it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here, swimming for the mighty Falcons. And that comes from a freshman who said he wasn't very fast, but three years later, he won three gold medals and a silver at the district championship. Our fourth B. A. was having thirty-one student athletes qualify for regionals, making it the most in the valley. And our fifth B. A. was our All-American, Jada Ashford, earning her fourth straight trip to state. Swimming is a year-round sport, and due to that, it's also a varsity sport. So we're going to start off with our fearless freshman. First, we have Zoe Garza. She is our one-hundred freestyler and wants to be an immigration lawyer. Next, we have Anay Garido, first team all region, one of our top divers, state runner-up in the two-hundred freestyle relay, and she wants to be an anesthesiologist. Next, we have Marlene Gutierrez, A. B. Honor Roll, our I. M.er and flyer, wants to be a immigration officer. Next, we have Jordan Gonzalez, A. B. Honor Roll, one-hundred freestyle specialist, and wants to be a business owner. Next, we have Noah Gutierrez, A. B. Honor Roll, backstroke and freshman of the year. Next, we have Leonardo Rincones, A. B. Honor Roll, backstroke specialist, and would like to be a veterinarian. Next, we have Samantha Acevedo, A. Honor Roll, I. M. and breaststroke specialist, wants to be a forensic science technician. Next, we have Laura Littlefield, A. Honor Roll, one-hundred freestyle diver, would like to study to be a veterinarian. Next, we have Chloe Perales, A. Honor Roll, I. M., five-hundred freestyler, and wants to study to be a lawyer. Next, we have Mia Perez, A. Honor Roll, five-hundred freestyle, wants to be a math professor. Next, we have Johannes Luna, A. Honor Roll, second team all region, butterflyer, wants to be a corporate lawyer. Next, we have Anthony Walker, A. Honor Roll, five-hundred specialist, wants to be a deep-sea Now for our super sophomores. We start off with Betty Guerrero, A. Honor Roll, five-hundred specialist, and is also a track star. Next, we have Gia Hernandez, A. B. Honor Roll, DECA state qualifier, breaststroke specialist, and would like to be a fashion marketer. Mari Cruz Quintanilla, backstroke specialist and sprinter. Next, we have QB one, Santiago Gomez, second team all region, and was our JV quarterback. Next, we have Angela Reynolds, A. B. Honor Roll, first team all region, state runner-up in the two-hundred freestyle relay, and would like to be a family physician. Next, we have Daniel Canales, A. B. Honor Roll, broke the breaststroke record, and is second team all district, second team all region, I mean, and wants to be a mechanical Next, we have Sebastian Salcedo, A. Honor Roll, five-hundred specialist and I. M.er, wants to be a DP officer. And now for our jubilant juniors. Michael Ramírez, second team all region, a sprinter, wants to be an aerospace engineer. Chantry Sparks is one of our divers and a breaststoker, wants to be an accountant. Diego Viera, A. B. Honor Roll, one of our divers, would like to be an electrician, also swims the butterfly. Jonas Apasivel is currently ranked sixth in his class, state qualifier in DECA, regional honorable mention, and wants to be a psychologist. Next, we have Daniel Castro, A. Honor Roll, I. M.er and breaststroke specialist, wants to be a H. S. I. agent, federal investigations. Next, we have Christopher Reynolds, A. Honor Roll, second team all region, sprinter and butterflyer, wants to be an aerospace architect. And now for our seniors. Guys, I'm real proud of you. I can't say how much we're going to miss you. First, we have Andrew Casades, who's also the head cheerleader of the high school. He's one of our divers and will be joining the coast guard. Fatima Casades, our long-distance specialist, also holds the record for scoring the most goals in water polo, and wants to be a journalist. Next, we have Christian Ramírez, A. B. Honor Roll, long-distance specialist. He was like a machine out there, and he wants to be a teacher! Next, we have Ariana Mansias. She's our team captain, A. Honor Roll, first team all region and state runner-up in the two-hundred I. M., wants to be an anesthesiologist. Next, we have Evangeline Wrinkle, A. Honor Roll, diver of the year, second team all region in diving, and wants to be the president. And now, Jada Ashford, A. Honor Roll, four-time first team all region, owns all of our school records and many pool records at Valley High Schools, owns the fifty-fly record at the San Antonio Swimming Pool, four-time district and region swimmer of the year, four-time state qualifier in two individual events, and made it to the finals in every time there at state. Also took two relays to state the past three years, went undefeated all four years at district and regionals. Our first-ever All-American, and she repeated the All-American honors this year, and we want to make congratulations on earning a scholarship to the University of the Incarnate Word in San Antonio, where she'll be studying nursing and swimming for gold. We wish you, and we wish you and our seniors the very best. You will be missed, and I do have one question for my swim team. So Jada left some big shoes to fill, so my question to my team is this: Who's going to fill them? Well, come get them, come get them! And that is your two thousand three, six-eight swim team of the, uh, number-one swim team in the valley.
Never let it rest.
Never let it rest.
It's a good and better.
It's a better and better.
It's a better and better.
We're ready for picture now.
[laughing]
Are all of you, coaches, coaches, let me know.
Good for you.
Take any first people, take any please.
I'm a friend.
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 Where's the whistle? Where's the whistle? All right. Thank you, Swimming and Diving. And finally, we have some incredible athletes who represented us in wrestling this year and, and had some incred- incredible accomplishments and did some amazing things for our school. Head Coach Roland Gomez.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. I am here tonight to present to you this year's regional, uh, wrestling qualifiers. Uh, this season, we were able to have two boys and three girls represent Los Fresnos at the regional tournament, one of which moved on to compete at the state tournament. Uh, let me begin tonight, uh, by introducing and thanking my assistant coach, um, present Coach Lonnie López. And, not present, uh, tonight is, uh, Selena Narajo, but, um, she is, um, also in our hearts, um, she's, has her father that's a little bit ill, so she wasn't able to make it tonight. Excuse me. I'd like to introduce our, our regional qualifiers tonight. Uh, I'm gonna begin with the boys at our 106-pound weight class freshman Nick Caramillo. Sophomore in the 144-pound weight class, Sinue Medina. Our girls in the 126-pound weight class sophomore Lynette Alonso. And the 138-pound weight class senior Yirene Moreno. And in our 185-pound weight class senior, Katie Reyes. Katie Reyes was also our two-time state qualifier and our regional runner-up. Thank you.
Okay, that wraps up athletics. Thank you all so much again. The number-one at-risk program in America is, is athletics, in my opinion. So, thank you, continue the support. Thank you. Coach, you and your coaching staff and your athletes have fired me up, so I'm ready to take on this agenda like nobody's business. All right? I appreciate that. Thank you. Whew! Take a breather. All right, guys. So, we're going on to Roman numeral six, public audience. No one has signed up. Uh, public comment, no one has signed up. Brings us to Roman numeral number eight, district reports. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, we present to you the monthly reports on our, our financial reports, and, uh, before I move on to number two, we'll see if anyone has any questions.
Any questions on the district reports from any members of the board? No, sir, no questions.
Uh, the second report is the 23-24, 2023-2024 Budget and Tax Calendar. Two important dates on this calendar, August 14th, when we'll hold a, a budget workshop, um, and August 28th, uh, public hearing and a special call meeting for the adoption of a budget and setting a tax rate. So, we'll continue to bring you this report as we progress through our budget cycle. If you have any questions, we would entertain those at this time.
Any questions from the board? What was the second date on that? Uh, it was the 28th. Thank you. Okay. If no questions, going on to action items, Roman numeral nine. Discuss and take action to approve minutes for meetings held on February 13th, 2023, and March 6th, 2023. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo.
Motion to approve, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, seconds, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving minutes for meetings held on February 13th, 2023, and March 6th, 2023, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Seven oh, right? Got seven oh. Number two, discuss and take action to approve budget amendment number seven for fiscal year 21-22. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
I move to approve budget amendment number seven for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Do I have a second? Mr. Sierra, seconds, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving budget amendment number seven for fiscal year 21-22, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously, seven zero. Action item number three, discuss and take action to award agreements or contracts for the Resaca Middle School roof replacement to Rio Roofing. Do I have a motion? Mr. Sierra, thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, seconds, any discussion? There being no discussion, uh, all those in favor of awarding, uh, agreements or contracts to, for the Resaca Middle School roof replacement to Rio Roofing, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously, seven zero. Number four, discuss and take action to approve substantial completion of Liberty Memorial Middle School Track and Fields. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
I move to approve substantial completion of Liberty Memorial Middle School Track and Field.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo? Seconds, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving substantial completion of Liberty Memorial Middle School Track and Fields, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously, seven zero. Number five, discuss and take action to approve agreements or contracts with independent contractors for professional learning, A professional learning providers. Do I have a motion? Yep. Mr. Sierra, thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Quintero? Seconds, uh, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving agreements or contracts with independent contractors for professional learning, A professional learning providers, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Brings us to Roman numeral number 10, adjournment. Uh, Dr. Salazar, any, any, um, any, este, announcements? Very good. All right. It is, what time we got, Martín? 6:39? 6:39, I adjourn this meeting.